Like to call the order Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, another God, indivisible, the routine justice for all.
As we are in our workshop meeting, you can see the approval of minutes for our next meeting next week. Executive sessions held between meetings. I'm Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning. On Tuesday, March eighteenth, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration of the purchase and lease of real property, contract review, bond proceeds, litigation, tax assessment, and personnel matters.
Any questions for Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none. We have our, did you have a question? No. Okay. Hearing none. We have our first moment of public participation. This is on agenda items only. Public participation on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a presentation today from American Red Cross. Was there, was there a public participation on agenda, on agenda items only? Yes, yes. All right. Hearing none. Directors and guests, we have a presentation today from American Red Cross Awareness Month. Sheila Born. Hello, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning, Sheila.
Morning. Chairman Douglas, Commissioner Hartwick, Commissioner Priest, thank you so much for this opportunity to come today and present to you. On behalf of the Red Cross, a lot of the work that we've done together over the years has been in my capacity at Penn State Health, but I'm pleased to serve on the Board of the American Red Cross and just want to talk very quickly today about the longstanding partnership that we've had with Dolphin County. And I'll draw your attention to the screen. These are some statistics of our partnership and the services we've provided in Dolphin County just over the past year since July of twenty twenty-four. And I know some of you are familiar with some of the tragic events that have brought on some of the services, apartment fire and some others. So fifty-seven disaster event responses that have supported three hundred and forty-five individuals since last summer, July first. That includes a hundred and thirty-one of our volunteers here in Dolphin County, and a hundred and eleven of those services have been for disaster health and mental health services. I know something that's near and dear to your heart, Commissioner Hartwick. There's other statistics. I don't have to go through all of them here, but I'll share them and submit them for your information going forward. And just call to mind the opportunities we have to continue to work together by expanding our preparedness education. I think you're familiar with our free smoke alarm installation that we do in counties, I'm sorry, communities throughout the county, and always looking for opportunity, even your own volunteerism. If you wish to join us, it's a great, great event. I've done it down in Middletown. And, you know, the community members are very, very grateful when you offer that service. Blood drive partnership, I think I may have skipped over the one thousand two hundred and sixty units of blood collected. And if you pay attention to the news at all, you know that there's a national shortage of, of blood to provide to our, our fellow citizens that are receiving health care. So really an important part of our partnership. So on behalf of the American Red Cross, Laura Burke, who's our executive director here in the central Pennsylvania region, the Board of Directors and all of our volunteers, just want to thank you for your continued partnership and the opportunity to come here today and be with you. So happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments? First, I just want to say thank you for all your work and thank you for providing us even the presentation in advance to review. And we're incredibly grateful for the American Red Cross and their reach obviously across the globe, but here, right here in our neck of the woods, seeing the impact that it's having. It's, it's incredibly important for the people who are in often their greatest time in need. And you're also giving people an opportunity to give back. And we love that, that there's an opportunity for people to even give blood to support someone else's health. And so what a cool, what a cool thing. And we celebrate you. Hand it over to Commissioner Hartwick.
Yep. Sheila, thank you for being here on behalf of the Red Cross today. And I know how many organizations you have represented, worked with, worked with you on, I guess as the Chair of the Chamber Board and Cretic, and you're very active and
A lot of hats, yes.
Our kids have went to school together as they were young. So, and also a great basketball player in her own right.
You don't have to put that on the record.
Yeah, that had a heck of a run and a heck of a team. So your involvement in the community is noted. So we appreciate you. Obviously, the Red Cross, in my experience, both as the Mayor of Steelton, but also, you know, we participated in one of the fire alarm, or one of the smoke alarm
Alarm installations, yeah.
I was really, I know, we went down to Steelton to be able to actually do the installation and walk door to door and, and participate. Do you know where the next, do you have a schedule of events to be able to do that you can provide?
Yes, we do have a schedule. I don't have that top of mind, though, so I'd be happy to provide it to you. But we, we schedule out prospectively months in advance, so I can share that.
I think that'd be helpful for the public as well. I mean, we've got volunteers here. We got people that are watching online. There are so many people that are committed. And we know doing that installation is obviously responsible for saving lives.
Absolutely.
And if we can do a bit of prevention and know it makes a significant difference, the more people we can rally, I guess the more hands the lighter the work. Also, do you have any statistics? I think you also are responsible for the majority amount of blood donation in the country. Is that correct?
Uh, I, I don't know the answer to that. The, you know, there are local blood banks too that also do blood drives and provide blood. So I don't know. I would guess that we are the largest, you know, blood supplier in the country, but I don't have those statistics top of mind.
And again, any listing of upcoming blood drives? I know we host them in our own county. Just the idea that we could help promote and encourage the community to participate as well. And anytime there's a tragic event and a fire, a loss of homes, loss of lives, the first person that responds is, is obviously our first responders, fire, police, and, but Red Cross is not far behind in ensuring that they're providing hotel rooms, temporary stays, immediate clothing, and the ability for, despite their life being completely upended, the ability to have some kind of support and stabilization with basic needs until they're able to get, you know, a pathway forward to be able to try to reclaim portions of their life based upon the natural disaster. So what the members of Red Cross do makes a significant difference. I think we also had a CPR training in here just the other day, which I know was a big part of, you know, our, our participation and cooperation. So from multiple levels, we want to thank you for helping to save lives, educate us, engage community members in being part of the solution and being a great partner in all of our times of need. I think that partnership has been demonstrated and we look forward to it continuing.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. And I appreciate this forum to be able to share this information with everybody who may be watching.
I think it's a great idea for us to work with you to get the message out there through our social media as well as yours. You have an extensive social media
Yes.
here with Facebook, Twitter, now X, Instagram, LinkedIn, and your national accounts.
Yeah, I may have glossed over that, but we would love to share that with the audience.
Absolutely, absolutely. I want to echo my, my colleagues' comments, Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Hartwick thoroughly updating on some things because he goes way back to some of the, the early work that we did together. And Laura Burke had us down there in Steelton that time with the smoke alarms. And he also brought up the first responders. And when you think of the Red Cross and the first responders, we got Jeff Fenders, our Director of Public Safety, and he in the back knows this, you and they are there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, when Mother Nature is at her worst, you're at your best, as our first responders are. If it's a, if it's a natural disaster, earthquake, hurricane, flooding, wildfires, or as you said, house fires, or any other man-made disaster, you're there without asking questions when folks need you the most. And can't thank you enough for that, for that work. And George also brought up the many hatch you where I know the work you do at the MS Hershey Penn State Bed Center. I may have that backwards, but you've been there many years working with the community. You work with Harrisburg Regional Chamber, Cretic, you work with the Red Cross. I don't know how you do it all. But I did tell you before, and he can watch this forever and hear it, but when your son was here with the McDevitt Football Team for the state championship, he stood here in front of forty other of his scholar athlete teammates and fellow students. And I asked him on the record, who was the better basketball player in their prime, you or your mom? And he had a chance with all his teammates there to say, me. He said, my mom.
Well.
And I think he's correct.
Thank you. That's good. I'm glad that's memorialized a second time.
Did we get that on the record in the meeting so she can review the minutes?
No.
Seeing the both, seeing the both play, he told the truth.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You were heck your player back in the day at McDevitt and St. Joe's?
Um, Temple.
Temple. Okay. That was close.
Yeah, yeah, Big Five.
But thank you for being here. Thank you for all that you do and your organization does. And we look forward to continue teaming up with you.
Thank you. And on behalf of Bishop McDevitt, thank you for hosting the football team. That was a very, very special event for them.
I have a proclamation to read for the American Red Cross, and so I'll read it now. We, the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners, join the community in supporting the life-changing work of the American Red Cross and spreading awareness throughout the county in this month of March. Whereas we celebrate American Red Cross Awareness Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Dolphin County and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. Whereas, be it as volunteers, blood and platelet donors, or supporters who give back through the American Red Cross Central Pennsylvania Chapter, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis. Whereas, whether it be, whether it by delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting service members, veterans, and their families, or saving lives with first aid, CPR, AED, and other life, other skills, this work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. Whereas, those that participate with American Red Cross remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergency, emergencies. Therefore, we join the two hundred and eighty-six thousand residents of Dolphin County in recognizing and honoring the remarkable service of the American Red Cross. And we do hereby gladly proclaim March twenty twenty-five as Red Cross Awareness Month in Dolphin County.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Sheila, and thanks to the American Red Cross for all they do in our region and the continued commitment to, to our region and to help those in need. At this time, we'll continue through our agenda. Ms. Weed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't really have anything that requires immediate approval.
Okay. Is there any questions about the personnel packet we have in front of us today? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis.
Morning.
Morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out yesterday. Everything will be ready for your vote approval next week. I'm going to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Wanted to share just a couple brief updates with you all in the public this morning. First, I understand there's been considerable feedback from Commissioners, staff, and the public about the format and structure of these Board of Commissioner meeting agendas, and the extent to which we have documents available for public review and for your review well ahead of time. Our office is in the process of updating our agenda format to make it easier to follow, and with additional relevant information for your review and the public's review. And we are also reviewing other counties for best practices in terms of how they present and upload their agendas so that we can ensure transparency around contracts, documents, other things that might be before you for approval. It's going to probably take a little while for our office to continue to gather additional input and feedback before we operationalize these improvements. But I did want you all in the public to know that we are actively on it. And hopefully, these improvements will be forthcoming in the next few weeks or, or month or so. Second, I wanted to remind everyone that the annual State of the County event is coming up on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth. Really looking forward to that. And lastly, wanted to let everyone know that this week Commissioner Hartwick was reelected as one of two representatives from Pennsylvania to serve on the National Association of Counties Board of Directors, where he represents Pennsylvania's interests along with Christian Leinbach from Berks County at the national level. So congratulations, Commissioner Hartwick.
Thank you very much.
That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Appreciate, I appreciate your time and effort and attention to the agenda. Thank you. Thank you for that. And Commissioner Hartwick, congratulations on being voted again for, for NICO. Is there any questions of Mr. Hagerty before we move on? Solicitor's report, Mr. Benaventana.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are several matters under review which we intend to present and have ready for next week's legislative session. But this morning, we have no specific, Solicitor's Office has no specific report unless the Board has questions.
Any questions of Mr. Benaventana? Thank you. Training packet. Do we have a training packet for, for you? I didn't, I didn't believe we did. Okay. Matters requiring Board action? I believe we have nine action items. Are there any that need to be pulled for a separate vote?
Yeah, I asked item one and item five people.
Item one and item five. Me for you. I'll pull item nine.
So I'd make a motion that we adopt today, although I'd like to have a point of, we're pulling it outside. We said five, right? Because that one may not be in opposition to the appointment. I just want to have, we're in a workshop. We should have sort of a larger discussion about that.
We can have a discussion about any, whatever you would prefer. So are you saying you want five to be part of the motion, but you could just like some time to discuss, or you want it to be separate?
I'd like it to be separate, so we can have discussion.
So we can, if we can move on the items like two, three, four, six, seven, eight?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. All right. We'll begin with item one.
Item one.
Well, can, can we wait for a motion in a second and then we'll begin discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of item number one.
I'll second. Now, any discussion?
Obviously, was hopeful to be able to have a discussion and make a different motion, but the motion has been currently made.
Well, we, we can amend the motion. We can change it if need be.
Understood. My, my concern is that we have had, you know, a discussion about this last year of the Tax Assessment Appeal Board. And I, I know you were very strongly suggesting and willed related to the appointment of, of Mr. McHale to the Tax Assessment Appeal Board at that time.
Yes.
I know I, during that time, I had reached out to Mr. McHale and had a brief conversation about a couple of basic items related to assessment process and approaches to value and, and common level ratio, just a couple of things to determine whether or not he was, you know, in a position to understand some of the issues. And while I think Mr. McHale may be a very qualified individual, he did not, he was not able to communicate effectively that he understood the concepts that we were talking about. So at that point, I know this Board made a decision to appoint him to the Industrial Development Authority. So he is now on the Industrial Development Authority. And I know, I've heard for a year about people not serving on multiple locations, multiple authorities, Assessment Appeal Board. And I also heard about nepotism and this idea that we should not have people that are connected to us that are serving at levels that, quite frankly, show an appearance at least of a conflict of interest that could be viewed as a problem. And I know that this individual's a paramour of your executive assistant. So from, from my perspective, you know, I think trying to move in a direction that would be, you know, we, we've opened this up to public participation. We've talked about qualified individuals. And as far as I saw, there was not, I, I didn't solicit anybody for the position of Tax Assessment Appeals or ensuring that they were on the board because I wanted to see sort of who from the public would have come forward in a non-political and non internal way. And I was pleasantly surprised by a number of the applications. One of them being Mr. William Collins. William Collins was the former Director of Tax Assessment here in Dolphin County. And if I can just read to you on the unsolicited application for appointment, what he wrote on his application of page four. Mr. Collins was at Dolphin County Director of Tax Assessment for twenty years, beginning in nineteen eighty-one. Him assuming the position coincided with the county's ascension from fourth to third class status as a result of population gain recorded in the federal census. The reclassification mandated various things, including the creation of the Tax Assessment Appeal Board to be separate from the Board of Commissioners. Upon the appointment of the independent Board, he assisted in establishing their rules, policies, and procedures. Mr. Collins is currently retired. Mr. Collins is currently retired. He is, you know, currently also holds his CPE. I met with him yesterday. He's got no time constraints in his ability to serve. And again, he was an unsolicited person that we had sort of gained from a process that was supposed to be about engaging the public. So, you know, again, my, my suggestion for this board position would have been somebody who's eminently qualified for the role and somebody who's got all of the appropriate qualifications and appears to not really have any connections at all in moving forward with Mr. Bill Collins. Now, we all know that Dolphin County may face a serious threat of a reassessment. One thing we cannot have on this quasi judicial board is anything that would set us up in a position of an appeal. And quite frankly, I want to ensure that those people that serve on this board are doing the things that are required to stand up in the other appeals process that won't put us in a position to have issues that are raised that could potentially move us in that line. And I think I've been pretty passionate about this from day one related to this specific board. And it's one that I thought we could get away from because we've actually had some level of a community engagement related to the applications. And I thought this was one qualified individual. There was also a young lady named Anne Marisa Song, who was an attorney from, a former attorney from Scarletos and Zanarich, who did a significant amount of real estate work and also I think represented Millersburg Borough and a couple of Dolphin County municipalities. I think she would have been an appropriate qualified second person for us to consider from those folks who were submitted. But in my opinion, there's obviously somebody who's eminently qualified to be able to serve in this role that was unsolicited, that I would want to move forward in consideration for this position.
Just for the record, a little over a year ago, am I correct, that Mr. Musser and Mr. Hayes sat on this board? Of three people?
That is correct.
Okay. I have, I have a great commitment to diversifying our boards in the sense of, you know, we have some cases where one member sits on four different boards and it's been a priority of mine that one person, one board. This is Mr. McHale's resignation from IDA contingent his appointment to tax assessment. This was a priority of mine last year, of which I conceded that priority. And it's something that I would like to see through. And I think he will be a great addition to tax assessment. So conflicts existed prior to me being here on these boards that were insiders, that were connected to everybody. This is not a conflict. This is not an insider and it is, it's just, that's just because I trust somebody, just because someone is a professional in the community that I happen to have knowledge of and a relationship with, that does not make it, if this were my family member, I would be entirely open to that being a conflict. It is not.
And all I would say is from a perspective of replacement, I mean, I know we did replace one board member. We replaced at the beginning of the term, Mike Musser was replaced with Brian Hudson, who provided diversity, a former director of the Pennsylvania Housing and Finance Agency and has extensive background in real estate. I think it's more, it's not only just about connections, it's about expertise in an area that is a quasi judicial board that has significant ramifications in county government that were even more of my concern than the conflicts. So again, I would still move forward with Mr. Collins to be considered.
I would have loved to see Hayes and Musser's expertise. Is there any more conversation?
So for the record, we have a motion second on the name in front of us, Steve McHale for the position, correct?
We have a motion and a second before us.
And by, by this letter being presented, you're saying we now have another vacancy on the Industrial Development Authority?
We will following this meeting.
Which gives more opportunity for residents and I'm calling out right now, put your name in if you want to serve on these boards. And you have an opportunity to serve on the Industrial Development Authority based on the upcoming vote that's about to take place here.
Any more conversation, any more discussion?
None for me.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Number five, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, discussion.
Points of discussion, just one clarification on, on sort of the process here and how the members of that board are being determined to be removed, replaced, or like, is there any sort of thought? We've really not had a discussion about the members of the board. I mean, in this case, I have been informed that Mr. Chuck Mizetti will be replaced. There are five members of that board. It is Danny Albert, who represents the recovery community, Dr. Erica Pinkney, who is, represents Keystone Human Services and the behavioral health side of this. And Chuck Mizetti, which was tough to fit in, somebody from a provider side that didn't have interest, but he is retired and probably knows the drug and alcohol system in Dolphin County better than most people, you know, who are actively currently engaged in and certainly has the historical knowledge and is probably one of the most valuable board members. So I understood, I, I really didn't have a problem with who was being recommended. I think it's okay. I just don't know how we are making decisions on who's being removed, who's not being removed, who's the valuable members of the board, what kind of engagement that we have with our department heads about sort of that, that discussion. And we are in the middle of a process. I want to make sure that we're not disrupting or sending messages to board members that have dedicated and been involved in this process now for several years that have been committed unpaid members that are now getting notifications that they're being removed, that have done, you know, a pretty stellar job.
Their, their term came to an end.
I don't think there are terms.
There are not, there are not terms?
Nope.
Well, then why does it say term will expire December 31st, 2027?
I think the, these boards are at will appointments from my understanding.
I was under the impression these were terms, but I had three before me that terms that, 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 that on a sheet, I believe were said that their terms were up or that they were coming to an end. Daniel Albert and Erica Pinkney were both, were both already previous board members, correct? They've been on the board.
All this board has, and the other two members of the board are Kristen Varner and Randy Jaeger from the Human Service side that represent the county.
Gentlemen, if I may, Mr. Chairman, may I? I'm going to ask, based upon some of the questions here that I'd like the answers to as well, whether the actual, the terms and some other things that were brought up here. I'm going to ask that we, we pull item five and bring back on next week if I can get a second to that motion.
I'll second it. Okay, the only point of discussion I was going to say was Daniel Albert, Erica Pinkney. We had Karine Morsy apply through the community application process, which it, it's important to me that we consider those individuals. And so creating one spot on that board for someone who applied was not, you know, appointed necessarily internally. And I think that individual, based on my understanding and review of their resume, is very qualified for that, for that role. I'm, I'm open to tabling it till next week. We have a motion and a second to table. All in favor of table?
We did have an initial motion in first to, do we have to get rid of that first motion? Or does that, is that supersede?
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second.
Just one point of clarification. I believe this is a situation in which you are all correct. Oftentimes, boards may have an expiration date with an additional clause that allows members to continue to serve until replacement. I do not have the bylaws for this particular board in front of me at the moment, but we will get that for you before next week.
We have a week to do it. Thank you. Appreciate you. Do we need to take a vote on tabling or is it first and second?
We should take a vote.
All in favor, tabling?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, do we have a motion? A motion for number nine.
So moved.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Actually, I want to thank Commissioner Hartwick for providing the qualifications of the individual Jason Wagner, who I did not know, but I saw the extensive qualifications this individual, which fall under the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study business. And I think that individual is well suited for this role.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No form of business? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Hartwick?
I'm fine today. Thank you.
Commissioner Priest?
Yes, I want to let my colleagues know that we were contacted by the Rotary Club of Harrisburg. They'll be hosting an international delegation of young professionals from Kosovo April 2nd and 3rd as part of the Open World International Program. They provide professionals from the former Soviet bloc countries with firsthand exposure in their respective fields here in the United States. During their visit to Harrisburg on April 2nd, they will spend the day at the Capitol touring with Senator Pittman and staff, observing the Senate session and meeting with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, Al Schmidt. And then afterwards, on April 3rd, they're going to meet us at the Voter Registration Elections Office. And I hope my colleagues were able to join to welcome them. We'll give them a tour and explain the process of the voting system here in Dolphin County, which is one of the best in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And we're going to tell them about how the operation is run from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM Election Day. The 1,100 volunteers we have, they're going to see the Run Back Machine, which is, is one of the, the most comprehensive machines in the world for, for election purposes. And look forward to hosting them on that day.
Thank you. I want to draw attention to this past weekend, St. Patrick's Day here in the city of Harrisburg. I had the privilege of running in the Lucky Charm four miler with our workforce coordinator, Dan. We got a good run in. It was a good time. Beautiful running weather, over a thousand runners here in downtown Harrisburg for that four miler. Thanks to the organizers who put it together. It was ran in a very professional way. The run went to the Capitol and then down, Front Street down to across City Island and around City Island. The impact of bringing the community together for fun and fitness. It was, it was a really great time. Parade followed that. If you're aware of all the activities, it was, it was a really good time. So I also want to share that last week I had the honor of handing out certificates to our new class of Crisis Intervention Team CIT graduates, bringing our countywide total to 459 trained individuals. Through the Stepping Up Initiative, Dolphin County CIT program equips law enforcement, probation, corrections and community partners with critical tools to safely and compassionately support people facing mental health challenges, substance use disorders or developmental disabilities. Since 2019, every police department in Dolphin County has participated, many surpassing national standards for officer training. This is public safety with heart and I'm proud to support it. And I want to, I pulled the training list because it's five days, full, full days that they go out there for this crisis intervention training. They get mental health training. They get training with, for, for those with developmental disabilities or autism. Human trafficking victims get an understanding of that, LGBTQ sensitivity, suicide prevention, cultural awareness, de-escalation. It's a really great program that I think just is such a benefit to our community and just wanted to take a moment to highlight that. Yesterday I spoke at a press conference standing with our Bhutanese Nepali community in the face of a deeply troubling situation. Five men, Dolphin County residents, fathers, husbands and neighbors, who I'm told are legal permanent residents with green card, green card holders, are being detained and ripped apart from their families right here in Dolphin County. These are refugees who are lawfully resettled in the United States under bipartisan federal policy. They've built lives here, raised children here, worked hard, paid taxes. And now without any real explanation to their family or communities, they're being taken away despite having no home country to return to. If ICE had concerns, they should have been addressed through the due process, not through sudden detention and separation from loved ones without explanation. In my estimation, this isn't justice. It's not public safety. It's persecution and it's wrong. I've already reached out to Governor Shapiro, Senator Fetterman, Senator McCormick and Congressman Perry. And I'm asking our residents to do the same. These families need our voices. This community deserves better and they can count on me to fight for them. And I will continue to bring updates as I have them. Any other comments from Commissioners?
Yes, I couldn't help but see the picture on the screen of you and the Workforce Development Coordinator dressed in your running outfits. And you failed to advise on who finished first between you and Mr.?
There was a little wager, yes. And I beat Dan, yes. But I mean, that's not really something to brag about, but at the same time, he seemed to think he had it out for me all week. He definitely was in my ear all week telling me he was going to get me, so.
Now, was this one of those photo finishes or did you far out distance him?
Beat him by five minutes, but you know.
No further questions.
Dan, the public comment portion will start soon if you want to.
Dan's going to rebut that. Yeah, alright. Well, with that said, we are now going to move on to our public participation portion. Just a reminder, we are live streamed and there's a three minute cap on public participation. So is anyone wanting to share?
Good morning Commissioners. Jean stole from, no TMI restart. Three things. One, these three minutes are fine, but we'd like to arrange, arrange with you to do a public presentation of a longer portion, either May 7th or May 14th. How does that process work to, to accomplish that?
Please reach out to our Chief Clerk's office and we can see.
Chief Clerk's office, okay, we'll do that. Yeah. Okay. Secondly, secondly, we talk about, we talk about tax assessment, et cetera. We had raises of taxes in Dolphin County here. One thing we have at Three Mile Island that should be, thank you. That should be looked at is, is there a way of, of increasing the taxes for the long-term storage of nuclear waste, high-level nuclear waste at Three Mile Island? Because at this point, I think it's under assessed. And with the expenses that we have in Dolphin County, that should be something that should be addressed higher. Because especially with the, the, the utilities desire to put 20 more years of nuclear waste there. Second, third thing, you have a new, you have a new contract with somebody who lobbies the, lobbies the legislature for Dolphin County because of the, the exuberance of the Nuclear Commission, Nuclear Caucus in the, in the legislature. And also the governor's exuberance for, for a restart. Is there any way that we can make sure that the governor puts into the budget a lot more money for Dolphin County to help with the taxes in Dolphin County because we're appropriate to lessen the Dolphin County taxes if they're going to try and put this Three Mile Island back online? Lastly, I think that the, the American Red Cross, when you were talking about the, what the American Red Cross is, is, has done and things like that, you missed radiological emergencies, okay? Because they do play a role there too. That's all I have today, so I'll reach out to you and we'll get the, we'll get a meeting set up where I can do a, is there a limit on the time of that presentation, presenting to the Commissioners? Is there a time limit?
Let's discuss.
Okay. We're thinking about 20 minutes. Okay, thank you. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hey, I've been talking to my father in Dolphin County.
Excuse me, could you please sorry state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Robert Gross. I've been talking to my father. He's not getting proper care with the nurses and stuff like that. They gave him, tried to give him the wrong medication last night. And if he would have taken that, there would have been a severe situation. He's supposed to receive his medication at seven o'clock. He had to wait till one o'clock to get his medication. Also, his feet are swelling and he can't walk. And there's nothing being done about that. They're not, and when you give the medication, it has to be regulated at the same time, all the time to make it work. But they gave him antibiotics for only two days and that's not sufficient to knock something out when he has a diabetic problem. That's why his feet are swelling up. But something needs to be done. Now he can't walk. So I just wanted to let you know and be aware of that. But there is some movement on the prime care or whatever about the operation, so that's good news. Things are starting to move along a little bit, but he's not going to make it to the operation if he doesn't get to the hospital. He has to go to the hospital. And I just wanted to let you be aware of that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Missouri, Swatara Township. Today, we saw again a process that was lacking for selection of people for these boards. It was lacking in a lot of ways. Thank you Commissioner Hartwick for giving us some of the qualifications of some of the people who are up here. A lot of people who applied for boards, a lot of them I asked to apply. They're people who are well qualified. They're community members who know what they're talking about in those areas. And I think it's a disservice to appoint them to boards without getting to share what their qualifications are. I think even to Mr. McHale, if he is qualified, as you say, it is a disservice for him to not come here and answer questions in front of the public. I have never worked at a job, and I know you guys are elected, so it's a little bit different, but I have never worked at a job. but I have never worked at a job where you submit an application and that the way you find out that you actually got the job to oversee the appropriation of millions of county dollars? And the way that you find out is that the person, me, another community member, tells you that people voted for you. You didn't even hear that they received your application. And you find out that you're on a Board. No one even did a phone interview to say, hey, are you still interested in, it's been a couple of months. This is what the Board does. Are you sure, blah, blah, blah? No, like, these people weren't even reached out to, and they're on Boards now. And qualified people, but still, it's a disservice to the public to pretend that you've explained what these Boards are and that you're doing a process that's any different than what you just sat here. I'm old enough to remember when Commissioner Hartwick got ousted for doing the exact same behaviors that we are repeating right now. And I understand that you want us to take you on the good guy discount. You're a good guy. We trust you. But the problem is, is that you have to trust but verify. And the verify is the putting these people in these seats, is the explanation of a process, and of doing an actual process to appoint people who are qualified for these Boards, because these Boards oversee a significant amount of money that goes through this county for very important work. And we have seen this money be squandered. We have seen money for economic development go to people who aren't actually trying to do economic development. I walked in in an RDA meeting where they were trying to give a company, Web FX, money, blight remediation money, for them to remodel a mansion. And it would have been passed, except for I walked in the, right before. And all of a sudden, they didn't want to. I know you're only letting me know because you know it's getting hot, I'm cooking. Because I'm glad you're redoing the agenda process. I think it's really important that that gets done, but this is a facade of transparency when it's not, right? These people, particularly people of color, deserve to be able to show why they're qualified, because they are, and not just be appointed in this way. And I really, really, really hope you consider your values and what led you to oust this guy, because if you're going to repeat the same mistakes, you're next.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second. Second. Where adjourn?